Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And welcome. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. I hope everybody had a restful long weekend and a meaningful Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Today, I'm very excited that we have a presentation for the public and for the City Planning Commission about DCP's newly updated Principles of Good Urban Design. As you all know, the pandemic highlighted some very stark economic and health disparities in New York City, and these core principles, which are at their heart, shared values, are one way for us to advance a healthier, safer, and more equitable city. And I think you will appreciate the work that has gone into updating these principles. Complementing the work needed to improve our shared streets and spaces is the equally essential work of incentivizing the creation of new housing across all neighborhoods. I know that many of you listened to Governor Hochul's State of the State speech last week. She set out a plan to create as many as 800,000 new homes across the state with very specific targets in different areas, including in ours, a 3% target for growth. And as you know, Mayor Adams has also set ambitious goals, and we are eager to deliver. We certainly need to think big if we are going to make this a more affordable and more just New York. So first up for today, we will open a special public meeting for a vote. We're going to be voting on a special permit for an accessory residential parking garage on West 28th Street in Manhattan. We have discussed this one a couple of times before. The project's clock expires today, so we would be unable to vote on it tomorrow, which is why we are going to have a brief special meeting to vote on it today. Once that vote is done, we will close the public meeting and then open our regularly scheduled review session. In addition to the Principles of Good Urban Design discussion, today's review session will go over two items that are up for public hearings tomorrow. A plan to combine two neighborhood business improvement districts in Brooklyn, Flatbush Avenue and Church Avenue into the Church-Flatbush Community Alliance, and the enlargement of the historic Otis Elevator Building in West Chelsea in Manhattan. The Commission will also get an update on a project that had its public hearing earlier this month, a 100% affordable development in Bathgate in the Bronx with about 200 homes, 30% of them supportive housing, and an on-site health center. And lastly, before we get going, I just want to offer a quick reminder that tonight, the Department of City Planning, in partnership with Councilmember Crystal Hudson, will be hosting a remote planning workshop for our Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan. This is a great opportunity for us to hear from New Yorkers on how to transform this area of Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, and Brooklyn. And as always, you can participate by going to nyc.gov/engage. So with that as an introduction, let's get started. I'm going to ask the calendar officer, oh, and I will note, we've got Commissioner Rampershad by Zoom, but we're going to hear from him as we call the roll, and we're going to get started with our special public meeting for today.
Yes. Good afternoon. This is the City Planning Commission's special public meeting, held remotely through the NYC Engage portal and in person at the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway Lower Manhattan. Today is Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. I will now call the roll. Chair Grotnick.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Commissioner Bozarg.
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Here.
Commissioner Duwek.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodridge is absent. Commissioner Kramani.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Here.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. A quorum is present. The first item is the Report section on page four, Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 1 and 2, 213, 227 West 28th Street Parking Special Permits, CD5. Calendar number 1, C200012ZSM. Calendar number 2, C200013ZSM. In the matter of an application for special permits concerning 213, 227 West 28th Street Parking Special Permits for a favorable report on calendar numbers 1 and 2, Chair Grotnick.
Vote aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozarg.
No.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duwek.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
No.
Commissioner Kramani.
No.
Commissioner Marin.
No.
Commissioner Osorio.
No. And I would like to point out that I very much agree with the community board and the Board President's position that allowing additional parking spaces in a transit-rich area is contrary to the city and state's goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and congestion. I also think that this decision requires updated data and analysis to fully understand parking needs in Manhattan Core, reflecting over a decade of infrastructure investments to incentivize bicycle use and policies to disincentivize the use of the automobile.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 1 and 2.
Great. Thank you very much, Ryan. A close one for sure, so thank you all for your consideration of this item. And Ryan, is there any other business before the Commission at this special public meeting?
No. Chair Grotnick.
Okay. And with that, the special public meeting is adjourned. We'll officially close that one out, and we will move on to our review session of today, January 17. And Ryan, would you like to introduce the first item and welcome our special guests?
Certainly. So we have a special presentation by our chief urban designer, Eric Gregory, and the urban design team leader in the Bronx office, Alexandra Padi Diaz, on the Principles of Good Urban Design.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's wonderful to be here today on behalf of the department and on behalf of all urban designers and planners of the agency to share our updated urban design principles. I will briefly provide a background on what urban design is, how important it is to helping shape outcomes of a better NYC, our role as designers within DCP in doing so, and then I'll pass it over to Alexandra to walk you through our process of updating those new principles and the new principles themselves. Please note that this is part one of our presentation on the principles. We'll come back to the Commission later this spring when we have a fuller guidebook, so more on that towards the end of our presentation, but we really wanted to come here today and kind of share these with you, get some guidance input on how we can make them even better. The Department of City Planning's Principles of Good Urban Design were first released in 2017 and have been a critical tool, building consensus around what our city cares for. As we move forward with the updated version, the principles will be instrumental for providing communities and other stakeholders with a common language from which to discuss and assess the built environment and together ultimately shape a better, more equitable, and adaptable city for the future. So what is urban design? In its simplest form, urban design is centered on people. As we move through our surroundings, as we move through the city, our surroundings play an essential role in shaping our quality of life, our streets, buildings, plazas, parks, and other shared spaces, which collectively make up the public realm. These help determine the city's livability, comfort, and enjoyment. Urban design focuses on how these elements of the public realm can be built and arranged to create a positive experience for everyone. Urban design decisions can affect climate risk, public health, safety, social equity, and more. Everything from the heights of buildings to the shapes, the height and shapes of buildings to the placement of benches on sidewalks are important considerations in creating a city centered around public life for everyone to enjoy. Underlying the city planning's work is a focus on how the relationships between physical form and human experience shapes public life. The department is unique and diverse that it has experienced urban design talent integrated across divisions that offers a wide range of technical expertise and knowledge of the built environment. This can be tapped not only for a variety of projects, which I'll walk through different ways at which you work shortly, and also explanations related to everyone's experience of the city. Moreover, the urban designer's ability to creative problem solve, build consensus, recommend, and effectively advocate for outcomes to the greatest degree benefit the public and advance our strategic goals and strategies. So we work in a variety of different ways as urban designers throughout the department. One of our core areas is supporting the review of applications that come through to you, and we do so by finding clear ways and simple language to communicate comments and recommendations in hopes that we can improve projects. We also collaborate heavily with inter-agency partners across a wide variety of city initiatives that affect the public realm. This example is showing our work in collaboration with the Department of Transportation as we craft design criteria for the permanent open restaurants program. We shape neighborhood studies, many of these you have seen and been part of, from Gowanus to Jerome Avenue and many others in between. Our urban designers provide technical expertise to help shape informed zoning through different massing modeling and help communicate changes to the built environment for conversations with stakeholders and communities. We help develop design guidelines. So this is an example of our work with our partners at NYCHA in shaping a guidebook that helps communicate their shared vision and values around design and also put forth their own ways of doing public engagement when thinking about the public realm, open spaces, and infill developments within NYCHA. We engage with communities. This is something that we very, very much love to do, not only just in support of the work that we're pushing, but also just to be out there and talk more broadly about the importance of design. And so these are just some snapshots of different events, both for initiatives and things that we've done on our own, like Parking Day. We rethink space, so working with our Transportation Division here at City Planning, looking at how mobility and micro-mobility needs can be met, and how do we explore different options for curb lanes is an example of rethinking space. And finally, we help rethink systems. So along with the Urban Design Forum, the Mayor's Office of Food Policy, and our Division of Regional Planning and Economic Development here at City Planning, we worked with the fellows to come up with ways of thinking about our neighborhood and regional food systems, so really thinking and challenging the way that those work. So in short, our mission is to shape a more livable city by advocating for high-quality design of the built environment and doing so with New Yorkers. By virtue of this expertise, we are able to promote and enhance the quality of life and well-being for New Yorkers and visitors by advocating for this. And we want to note that value of design is not just in how it looks, but the value, quality delivers value, and value defines quality. So before I pass it over to Ale to talk about the principles, just to highlight the reason why we had these principles established back in 2017, they were helpful for us to guide the city and community members and anyone hoping to promote livability and vitality in our neighborhoods. They were mainly focused on practitioners, so those kind of engaged in the city-making process, architects, design teams, applicant teams. And we did raise, this is something that we wanted to focus on as we updated them. But they are important because they provide us with that shared language and consistent approach, a set of values for designing a better city. So with that, I'll pass it over to Ale.
Good afternoon. So 2020 came, and with it, a time to reflect on everything that was happening to us and around us. The pandemic, the racial equity protest, the city's economy, the mental health crisis, and we all discussed internally multiple times how we can put urban designers, and urban design to be at the service of all New Yorkers. How can our urban design principles reflect and contribute to addressing and solving the current reality and what was important for all of us at this time? But to do it, we wanted to have a new approach, one where we could incorporate the thoughts of all New Yorkers. And given the pandemic and the lack of ability to gather in-person in workshops and in-person discussions that we all enjoy very much, we decided that to build a website to engage with the residents of the city was the best that we could do at that time. So we designed a website that was up for six months between 2020 and 2021, and it was an interactive website that included a video that explained urban design and why it is important, a survey for people to share what they care about the city, a space to share stories and photos of their neighborhood, and also a forum where we were able to have in-depth conversations about the principles, the word, the intent, the spirit of them. Along with the website, we attended online community board meetings inviting residents to participate. There was a lot of publicity in the ferries and in the sidewalks, and once we were able to gather in person, we hosted roundtables with design and real estate professionals. We hold inter-divisional meetings and also inter-agency workshops. We created an advisory group with multidisciplinary colleagues of our department to also serve a sounding board and participate along with all New Yorkers. What we heard as opinions about the 2017 principles is that things that we kind of already knew, and some things that were new, that they had an insular focus, that they were high-lever and lacked clear grounding to our everyday work, that needed to reflect our current challenges and opportunities. And this was an interesting comment for us because we actually really liked that the principles weren't static. They are meant to evolve as society and the city evolve, and that they should have the spirit and the ability to be revisited over time in many multiple forms. And among the many things that New Yorkers asked us to incorporate and consider was climate change, resiliency, and equity. This feedback shaped our approach for the new principles. We work hard and make them more accessible to a wider audience, to incorporate their feedback and suggestions, to provide concrete examples on how they can be used, and to how to put them into action, both internally and external processes, to build dialogues on the quality of the built environment. So here are our new principles. The first one is to enhance people's daily life. Everyone should feel safe and comfortable moving around the New York City and enjoying its open spaces. Good design can contribute to a more inclusive, enjoyable experience of the everyday life in the city that fosters a sense of pride and belonging. This speaks to accessibility and safety, mobility and connectivity, comfort and beauty, quality and durability. In this example, Open Streets and Restaurants Program is one of many that promotes creativity and innovation through ambitious and thoughtful approaches to design and programming. This brings a new level of connectivity, sense of comfort and beauty in reimagining our streets. Second principle, care for a neighborhood's history, culture, and identity. People make our neighborhoods, the buildings, the parks, and the streets are their backdrop. Good design respects the histories, identities, and cultures that have shaped and continue to shape the city's many diverse neighborhoods. This speaks to community and diversity, existing uses and networks, natural features and resources, building forms, and features. Innovative Village is a master plan that enhances a sense of community and diversity around an existing important house of worship, while the forms of the new buildings speak to the existing context and create a dialogue between the different networks in the area. Third principle, embrace the city's uniqueness and dynamism. The New York City is an unparalleled, dynamic, and vibrant world capital. Good urban design creates a welcoming environment that embraces the entrepreneurial spirit and rhythm that defines New York City. This speaks to innovation and creativity, flexibility and variety, all and new, resourcefulness and tenacity. One Vanderbilt speaks to the weaving of all and new with thoughtful design on the ground floor to help open and frame views of Grand Central Station, as well as the new plaza spaces and connection points to transit. This is one of many examples that we have around the city. Lastly, but not less important, confront society's greatest challenges. New York City must secure its future against many challenges, from climate crisis to social inequity. We must make design choices that help us build a safer, stronger, fairer, more resilient city for generations to come. This speaks to sustainability and resiliency, equity and opportunity, health and well-being, diversity, and mutual understanding. As an example, the Gowanus Neighborhood Plan and subsequent projects in the area are a good example of how remediation of the canal and making new poorly accessible waterfront spaces can be achieved through thoughtful urban design. In an effort to make these principles accessible in a language, in terms of language, but also as a communication tool for discussion and advocacy and a resource for all New Yorkers, we're creating a guidebook to be published in the spring that will feature a summary of the engagement effort, guidance from when and how to use the principles, details about the principles, including specific strategies to achieve them, and photographs of examples all around the city that help visualize and describe the principles. And who are these for? These are for the public, those who live and work and visit the city every day, the professionals, the designers, planners, and other city-making professionals, the government, the city agencies, elected officials, and all the policymakers, and the developers, the builders, and the real estate professionals. The Principles of Good Urban Design are a shared resource for everyone to use in creating better neighborhoods across the city. They're intended to help everyone involved in the city-making process to advocate for highest-quality design that meets the need of local communities, whether it is in informal conversations about an initial idea or a concept, or a more formal conversation about a project working its way through a public, the usual process, a community board meeting, or in the Board President's hearing, or even here in the City Planning Commission hearing. These principles are more than just a set of words or definitions. They're said to share, they're said to be a shared value that should stimulate new ways of thinking, of collaboration, and consensus building with respect of society and all its complexities.
Thank you, Ale. So the City Planning Commission. This plays a critical role in advancing and advocating and activating the Principles of Good Urban Design through policy, by linking design decisions with broader priorities, understanding how decisions shape the built environment, inform questions to applicant teams, and evaluation of projects; through communication, ensuring consistent language and messaging across projects, influence how policies and decisions are crafted in the CPC reports and through consensus building; and finally, through advocacy, connect broader design outcomes with citywide initiatives, policies, and projects, as well as design excellence to and for everyone in the city. So live, we've updated our urban design webpage within the City Planning family of webpages. So this is now live. The principles are up. And at your desk, each of you has a brochure, a one-page summary that's also available to download on our website of the principles themselves. And what's coming next, as Ale mentioned, is the larger guidebook. We want to push some updates back to the goodurbandesign.myc website that we used during the previous engagement session, and we have an idea for a lot of different outreach to kind of come back and share these with those that provided feedback along the way, and of course, come back to you guys later this spring with the fuller guidebook and walk you through that. That's our presentation for today. We really thank you for your time, and with that, we'd like to open it up for questions.
Thank you very much, and thanks to you both for all of your work in making this happen. We know this was a lot of effort, a lot of community engagement, and you know, we're really excited about where this is heading and also to see the final product in the spring. I have a couple of questions just to kick off the conversation. Why don't you start by sharing with us a little bit more about what you either thought at the beginning of this process or learned at the end of the process were the biggest challenges or limitations with the old principles?
Yeah, maybe I can start, and then Ale should definitely add on to this. You know, as one that was here, and I've been with the department since 2011, we had talked about, you know, some form of principles even back then and worked with urban designers across the agency to put forth that 2017 version. I think looking, I think it was really great for us to do that. It was something that had not been done previously to put forward our values. But as we mentioned in the presentation, given that they were so maybe insularly focused, I think, you know, we knew that there was an opportunity and need to kind of share that more broadly and get feedback from others. So I think that was like the first thing that was of prime importance. And you know, we recognize also that we wanted to update these right around 2020. So there was already kind of this idea that we need to kind of revisit them, and I think that through what we all experienced in 2020 and beyond, really highlighted a need for us to set intentions and re-engage and reevaluate the way we do our work. So Ale, please.
Yeah. With the engagements that we also did with the community boards, and we also learned through the comments in the webpage that the previous principles weren't that well-known. As Eric said in the presentation, they were when, they were meant for us, not necessarily for everyone. And part of that was also understanding how we could make the new ones more accessible and also known by the public. And one of the things that we heard a lot was how useful was, and this might sound silly, but a physical publication in the desk or in a table. So we are working hard for the guidebook to be that exciting book collective of papers that everyone can have in their homes, in their classrooms, and at the same time, architects and designers have them in their desk while they are thinking about their projects in the city.
When you went through the year-long engagement process, what would you say was the most important thing that you learned from that process that you might not have expected to have come out of that process?
Well, maybe I'll, it's a great question. Take one that Ale always voiced when we were at a few of these meetings, is how these things can actually help those that maybe don't have quite the experience in working with us. How do they grab onto these and utilize them? I mean, there's lots of really great design firms, landscape architects, architecture firms out there, and they kind of know how to kind of do a lot of these things, but how can we get this in the hands of those that maybe are trying to start a new business or engage with the city through NWBE programs? How do we kind of help those into this process a little bit better? So I think that that was something that was surprising throughout the journey to talk about with folks. I would say the other thing was how are we making them actionable and landing them on the ground? And so I think that's something that we really, really took to heart, and I think that's why we, you know, we'll come back to you with more ways of how we actually do that, but hopefully some of those prompts of what these principles speak to starts to allude to some of the things. So how can we develop some questions that maybe you guys could put forth to applicant teams when they come, or, you know, when a community board is face of the project, like just kind of some basic questions that nest underneath these so they do seem more connected and obtainable and not just kind of like lofty goals? So I think those are things, yeah.
Yeah. And in terms of the principles itself, it was really interesting, I think two things stand out for us. One, the impression that urban design wasn't at the service of the daily life, and how much that was commented through the webpage and the engagement, and that inspires, that was what led us to have principles dedicated to highlight that, how urban design primarily needs to facilitate the daily life of every resident in the city, and what are those aspects that people understand of daily life that we should include? And also that some themes that we thought were understood were included weren't, such as sustainability, resiliency, and using urban design to overcome those social and economic challenges. It was something that we know urban designers do, and that was not what people were getting from it. So also, the engagements serve us to see the gaps of how people understood our practice and also what were the values that we're looking for for us to enhance and achieve.
Thank you for that. My last thought, and then I'm going to go to my colleagues here, is I think that's one of the things which is most exciting about this process, which is how do you make it actionable? How do you make it grounded for the everyday work of practitioners and the public and community members, et cetera? And your vision of having it on the desk of every person who is thinking about these, I think is a great ambition, and I think, you know, it will, it will really be of great, great use when that final product exists, but you're clearly on a great, great path here. great path here, so congratulations. So let me see, Commissioner Benjamin. I'm going to note that Commissioner Crowell either has his hand raised for the entire meeting, or I'm gonna not, because, you know, yeah, okay, the right hand will be ahead. Commissioner Benjamin, go ahead.
Quick question. Is this going to be a 197A plan, so it can go out to the community boards and the commission and become an, an adopted part of the city planning ecosystem?
It's, it's a great question. I, you know, we had, we had talked about other ways that, and somehow you guys could adopt these principles as well as a commission. These were really not, I think they could be helpful in, in a, in a community that is looking to do a 197A for sure, like this is a tool, you know, that, that the department could help support those groups that are pushing forward. We hadn't talked or discussed that this would be something that, you know, would be attached to that specifically.
You may want to think about that. I mean, if you're really looking to get buy-in, I think as, as planners, we tend to deal with a very small group of people who are similarly interested. And if we want to get bigger buy-in and bigger comments, I think we're going to have to go out there in some different kind of way. So just a suggestion, and thank you for the presentation and all of the work.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Crowell, followed by Commissioner Osorio.
This work is truly tremendous. Thank you very much for, for it. I have a few questions. In principle one and principle two, you mentioned comfort and beauty and building features and form. What are some of the strategies to get at those issues very early in the process? As a new commission member, I often see projects that, to me, are inconsistent with, with a lot of the values that I think we're trying to achieve. And where do, where does the planning commission come in on that, and how do we get some of those principles adopted earlier at the, at the community board level with borough presence, things like that?
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, Ale, please also add to whatever I can answer on this. You know, I think part of the, the thing that you mentioned being early is extremely important, right? A lot of the design moves that take place, if they happen later in the process, make it very difficult to achieve larger outcomes, which we're striving for here. So I can point to an example that we worked on with HPD when Commissioner Bozorg was there, and actually starting to, to work to an agreement of like thinking through how our two agencies at HPD work better in the design review process. So how can we kind of be informed of things a bit earlier? How do we also stay on the project after it comes through to a vote here? So we kind of ensure and like, we're watching to see how things play out and continue to guide. As commissioners, you know, we think that there's space to, I think, think of these as prompts, and I think, you know, we'll share more when we come back in the spring with like, you know, specific questions underneath these, but, you know, thinking about comfort and beauty, right? The, the fact that, you know, how do we think about seating within a plaza space? Who is, who are we providing that seating for? How, what abilities are able to use it? Is it set up in a way that encourages social interaction, or does it kind of keep people from not kind of coming together? How are we thinking about the durability of those spaces and materials and how they're used, and ultimately what types of maintenance agreements can be put in place? So, you know, these are important decisions for the designer to be thinking about when they select the proper materials and palette for a project. So those are just a couple of things that come to mind with respect to comfort and beauty. Of course, the form of the building, how uses touch the street, how we're thinking about transparency and eyes on the street is, is important, and, and ways that we can kind of think about that, that connection point to our sidewalks is really crucial.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio, followed by Commissioners Bozorg, and then Kurmani.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation, and thank you so much for the work. Since the principles came out in 2017, we, we use them to teach our, our planning students about urban design and, and really point out the importance of having something like this. So, so thank you, more than anything, for the work. I had a, I, I want to emphasize Commissioner Benjamin's point and really encourage you to think about that. On one end, it would be one of the questions that I had was, okay, so how do we position this work, let's say, in relation to other agencies, similar approaches to urban design? Like, for example, the DOT Street Design Manual? And like, how do we make sure that this is not just sort of like speaking with it, but, but also sort of like helping lead and maybe update some of these other existing city toolkits? So if we can be useful in any way, I would love to, to, to activate myself in that regard. But I also wanted to just sort of like ask if you can expand a little bit on the type of feedback or the type of recommendations that we could provide in terms of activating them. For example, will the principles or the website create some type of checklist, some type of like step-by-steps sort of questions that, that we could compare the proposals that come through the land use review process in relation to what the city's policy or position on this is? Is there anything that, that, that you can share with us, or can we be useful in thinking a little bit about how to actually make them a, a practical?
Sure. We have discussed. Yeah. We have definitely discussed ways that, that this could be put in practice to you, and by you. We have discussed how now, as far as the CPC reports, there's some language about how the projects are meaning some of the principles of good urban design, or if that is just a separate outlet that is attached to them, or even if it becomes a document part of the briefing sheets. But that is, we're very far from that right now. We were trying to also understand how this can be useful to the practitioners, like inside the, the agency that then supports and translates the work that, that we do together. So we, we are gathering ideas, the ideas we have so far, we're like focused on the principles, and this is our moment to think together about how we can work together to make them actionable, aside from the guidebook.
Well, as you think about that, maybe, I mean, two very specific things that come to mind. One is whenever there is the next waterfront realization program update, the principles should like deserve a special place in, in some of the policies, so that applicants actually explain whether or not they're using them and how are they reflecting them. But then the other one is the, the builder's pavement plan that we often talk about here? Like, how can you actually provide some guidelines in terms of what that should look like? Not just based on DOTs, again, framework, but what the department actually thinks that should be framed and structured about?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Bozorg, followed by Commissioner Kurmani.
Yep. Hey, I also just really wanted to thank you guys for this presentation and all the work that your team does, Eric and Alessandra. I mean, I, when I, my time at HPD was just, we've learned so much from DCP's urban design teams over the years, super creative, super dynamic, and it's just great to see the evolution of these products on that team. I, these principles, I'm really excited to see the actual booklet and kind of hold it. I really think they capture a lot that we've heard about and seen through the planning profession, and even just in our kind of cities' experience over the past decade or so. And really struck by, in practice, how some of these relate to each other. So really welcome this idea of these kind of guiding questions that we should be thinking about and even providing to developers, to planners, as they are starting projects, especially, you know, I'm thinking of like embracing the city's dynamism and care for a neighborhood's history, culture, identity. In practice, we all often hear these things as conflicting, with people's lived experiences of that embracing dynamism can feel like an affront to a neighborhood's culture or identity. So how we, how we advance these principles in a way that can really actually relate to someone's lived experience with change, I think would be really interesting to explore and provide some questions around for planners and developers early in the process. And I'm just curious, one of my questions is whether in your planning process, you heard about some of that tension, and what, what types of questions came up around that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's one that, that we hear in many different forums. I know you guys, the commission has to interact with that as, as well. I, you know, this is where the, the challenge lies sometimes, is how you balance across the three, and, you know, even, even trying to pick imagery that we felt exude them is always tough, because there's probably something that maybe someone might pick out as not being true to that. You know, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, no project is, is perfect, and how do we, how do we go about trying to make it better, even in small, small ways, is important. And, you know, I think finding ways to, to bring the conversation, so it isn't just a question, you know, we have old and new, and, and like, how do you kind of interweave those two, but also talking about not just the physical things, but the social fabric that's on the ground in many ways is, is even more crucial, and, and understanding how our interventions are going to interact with those in a physical way. I don't know if you have any additional thoughts there?
The other question I had is whether your unit is still kind of engaging in neighborhood-specific design guidelines? I know, like, the Long Island City waterfront design guidelines from many, many years ago really informed a lot of the actual development and design that happened or is happening along the waterfront. Are there, are there still going to be kind of focus areas where then you all use these principles to do real kind of place-based design guidelines, or just what's the relationship between kind of that type of exercise in your unit?
Absolutely. You know, one could see the principles as one is to kind of set the table and kind of let people know the things that we're, we're thinking about and want to work through. But certainly, you know, when you're working with a specific location and neighborhood, community groups, you have to kind of tailor things accordingly to what, what the conversation is in that, that particular place. So, you know, we showed, we didn't talk about today, but Governor's Island is one that's relatively more recent, where we, along with the Governor's Island Trust, work through guidelines in addition to what was passed in zoning. You know, again, just to kind of talk about the things that, you know, we're able to enshrine in one way, and how do we at least keep kind of pushing for the things that we're hoping to see in the vision and intent, and that's really where guidelines come in. And I imagine with many of the studies that we have, whether it be a city of yes, or the Atlantic Avenue mixed-use study, there'll be more focused design ideas that get pushed there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kurmani, followed by Commissioner Cerullo.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, and it's really, really exciting to see this, and I totally know how much work goes into it, and was reflecting, like Commissioner Bozorg, on my time at NICA, and when we first introduced the concept of connected communities, and people thought we were out of our minds. And to see how far that's come and then to hear this is, is really encouraging. So congratulations, it's very exciting. I think all of my questions have been asked, but I just want to say a couple of things, which is that I think this is also, as you know, whether it's the Urban Design Forum, Center for Urban Pedagogy, Hester Street, there are organizations, I think, that will all, who are doing those neighborhood-specific planning and design work, to Commissioner Bozorg's point, that will feel really bolstered, bolstered by an institutional response that reflects and can be partnered with what those organizations and communities, like, these are principles that are echoed in many different places, and I think to have a, the city agency also reflect those is, it just, it's more than nice, you know? It really is a consistent message that this is what we care about in New York City, and I think to that end, I guess, I guess I do have a question, which is in terms of like integrated design principles, which has come up, like DOT, parks, NICA, do you see or is there that kind of integrated relationship, or is that an objective of this?
Yeah, thank you for that. The, you know, I think coordination across agencies is, is really important. Over the years, we've, you know, there are designers across other agencies, and we've tried to do some more informal things over the years, where we, we would come together as inter-agency urban designers and talk through a different, a particular project. So the connected communities work is one where, right before the pandemic, we were doing workshops in our offices with a host of different agencies to talk about how those, how that guidebook could be better utilized, as kind of one example. It's, you know, it's, it's challenging, you know, a lot of the, the built environment agencies nest under the deputy mayor of operations, which is different than, than ours, and so sometimes getting alignment can be, can be tough there. That said, I know that there's been a lot of conversation points by some of the groups that you mentioned, design civic groups, around having more of a centralized place for public realm thinking and planning and coordination. I think we, we welcome that, if it, if it does come about, but, and it's been talked about through various reports recently, but I think in the meantime, like, we're, we're finding ways to do that, like through open restaurants. So, you know, as with many things, it's about people and, and the connections that you make across agencies that determine it, but how do we find ways of working, like, design protocols are one, that we, we were trying to implement with HPD, that we've done with parks, where we've kind of got these things so that they, they do stick, so that there's touchpoints that happen when, when our projects overlap?
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Cerullo, followed by Vice-Treasurers.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I add my congratulations to you both and the team for this, and I'm checking off questions I had, because everyone's touched on them, terrific questions. I'm just going to stick for a moment with the line of questioning from Commissioner Kurmani about the coordination between agencies, and everyone's touched on this. I think it's really important that there's, the city accomplishes the ability to bring all of this together in some way, because the public, I say the public, the private sector coming to the city is thinking they're going to the city, and, and so the idea that you can go to one agency and get one set of standards and go to another agency and get another, it's common, we get it, but it's not the best relationship between the private sector and, and the public sector. And I, I think that would, that's really important, because you don't want anyone to miss this, thinking they're talking to another agency and they're getting sort of the design principles from them. So however the next phase of this could work to accomplish that, I think I, I completely support. I want to, I'm focused on the word principles for a moment, and, and, and just to get an idea of whether, as, as you brought us through, they're sort of, I'll, I'll use the term thematic, right? They're, they're the, they're sort of the goals and the, and the truest sense of the word principle. But do you envision that the booklet that is produced will have specific examples of how to accomplish that? Like, I'm making this up. Like, if we were in the DOT guidebook, and it taught, it had a category such as, and I was focused on, quality and durability, do you see that there's going to be a photograph of a, of a bench that's durable and it's high-quality and durable? Or is it just the, in this version, in the C, in the DCP version, it's just a principle of quality and durability? But you'd go somewhere else, which is why maybe marrying some of these different ideas that become more specific, but the themes are the same, get united in some way? What, what is envisioned here? Are there, will there be specific examples of design or product that help to accomplish the principle?
I, yeah, I can take, I can start. I, we have, we have to be a little bit careful. You know, I think anytime, we, we know that there are colleagues at DOT that are going to be pushing for certain things, and oftentimes, whenever we have a project that, that requires a review, you know, we, we point that out to applicant teams. And we try to, you know, from past experience, like, put forth like how we kind of navigate those things, where we maybe have different, I think, I, I don't think that they would object to these principles at DOT, they would in fact probably celebrate them. It's probably about some of the finer-grain details, like, and you're kind of mentioning some of those around durability, for instance. I think our hope is to show, maybe at a high level, why those things are important when you're planning out a space, and then maybe there's ways that we can think through teasing out specific questions that you might push to another agency to understand how that principle interacts with maybe something that they're in lead of or in charge of or have, have another design lens on top of. I will say that many of the other agencies, you know, thinking about our design department of construction, you know, they've also put out guiding principles, right? And, and I think this is something that we, back in 2017, when we were having like conversations with inter-agency partners, then around principles, is like, okay, well, could we find a way to have a shared set of, of, like, you know, good urban design principles that all agencies are shepherd? And it was, it was challenging for, I think, those groups to kind of get under one umbrella. As you can imagine, they all kind of have different mandates, they're focused on different things, and they probably are teasing out. things, and they probably are teasing out certain aspects more than others, is what we were finding at that point in time. That said, I think that there is, you know, an opportunity here for us to think about that as we work across agencies, to be better coordinated. And perhaps these principles, there can be different ways that we can, we can do that.
Okay. And I, I, I think that's terrific. Two very quick things. You mentioned DDC. I was going to just say that while this may be focused on how the private sector would be interacting in, in terms of understanding what the goals would be with respect to design, that I, I know in my own experience, the projects that I've worked on directly have really been city projects. And, and city agencies have been driving the design standards. And city planning has never been at the table on those, at, at those things. DOT has for sure, DDC and other agencies, DOT, parks, DEP, but not city planning. So that's, in terms of how internally the, the city operates, this is an important thing to bring into that mix as public projects grow, right? Especially in the public realm. This is all public realm-driven, and we're in a whole new world in terms of what we want to do in the public realm. So I think the timing is, is certainly, it's ripe. The, the, the final thought about this is, in terms of the principles, and this is a sort of not super new issue, but because of all of the public realm design work being done, the one huge challenge we're real facing is how to create safe, a safe, a safe public realm. And the idea that the, you know, the go-to is, is to literally create an enclosed space, we, I think, we need to be thinking about what is the future of public space with respect to public safety? You know, bollards are the automatic go-to. And when you have a meeting, an inter-agency meeting, and, and I understand it completely, you have police and fire engaged in those discussions. The, you know, automatically, it's all, we have to build bollards around everything. And either, and if that's going to be the only way to get things done, then we need to be thinking about design standards for protective mechanisms, not just curbs and, and tables and chairs and planters. But we need to be thinking about that so that our city, that becomes part of the beautification, the durability, the experience that people have. And it's not just this sort of shocking element that gets added to an otherwise, what's supposed to be a relaxing and sort of beautified space becomes something that feels uncomfortable because you have gates and, and bollards. Again, not to undermine public safety, but I think from a design principle point of view, we need to be looking at that as we move forward because it's, that's, that's the go-to, just like build, put bollards around everything. And, and it's hard to argue against them because public safety is always at the core of, of that. But that's not meant the sort of public safety element. We say people need to be safe, but I think we could be directing, we could be directing people better with respect to how to do that in a, in some principle that isn't now identifiable in, in here.
If I could add, that is the sentiment of the first principle that we were trying to capture, the embrace the daily life.
Yes.
How urban design facilitates that, how urban design ensures public safety, facilitates a family walking on the sidewalk to go to school or enjoy a safely a public space or getting out of a grocery store full of bags and how to go to the subway in a way that is easier, is effective, but also enjoyable and beautiful.
Yes.
And I think part of the principles is, is exactly this, is what, what sparks the principle to continue for us, to keep discussing between each other, but also with the city officials, the inter, the, our partners in the agencies and the residents. And I think what you highlighted is exactly what we were looking for in a sense of, like, what are those sort of things that we think we're addressing, we're not addressing, you think we should be addressing, we're not addressing, and, and, and meeting together to start creating those standards, protocols, or further guidelines that are needed, especially for our daily life, which is one of the, the strongest things that we heard during the feedback process, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my, my question is, is really one for the department. And that is, once we adopt the final report on the principles of good urban design, I mean, how are we going to really go about getting this into the bloodstream of land use in the city? I mean, i.e., the AIA, Revny, ABNE, the land use bar? Are we going to go into public forums and really emphasize what, what our expectations are about this?
I'll answer that in saying that what we would like to do is, over the coming months, develop that plan as to how specifically to really get this in the bloodstream. We've heard, you know, a couple of ideas even here in this commission meeting today. I know that the team has ideas about how to do that and a vision. But I think most importantly, you know, we, we are going to need to showcase it and adopt it and celebrate it. The agency is going to need to go out, explain it and sell it and educate about it. And what I would expect is that we will be able to come back to this commission contemporaneously with the time that we put out the official framework and book and propose a plan to do just that. Is there anything else you all would want to add on that point?
Yeah, I think a, a beautiful thing that happened also when we were in the community board meetings is that afterwards, you know, the board office staff then attends all meetings every month. And the subsequent ones after the ones that the urban designers presented, the, the webpage, they started to use more the terms of, and we could see that they had interacted with the webpage. And one of the things that they asked us was to come back to them, to make them, to make the guidebook and anything that we were going to put out accessible to them. So I feel like, as Chair Garagney was saying, we're thinking innovative ways of how to reach out back to the community boards to tell them, we heard you and this is, we, we, we invite you to interact with this webpage, this is the result, and we want more from that as the subsequent engagement page that we're going to put again in the future. And we are hopeful that as we are using it, mostly the residents are using, the community board members are using it, pointing out a thing. And as I said to Commissioner Cerulo, start creating other type of conversations that we should be having, and at the same time highlighting to the architects and designers, this is what we're caring about, not like, the, like, when we're seeing a waterfront space design, we only want to walk around and we want program, we want all this type of things that they were not seeing and creating the principles in the guidebook. We hope facilitates those type of discussions. But we welcome this, we were publicizing the webpage, we, we publicizing the ferries and the sidewalks, went to community boards, reached out to all the organizations. But any other idea that, that you can give us, we will welcome. We're really interested in, in being out there with this guidebook.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Gold.
So I think less a question and more sort of a statement, but it sounds like, to the extent we give that guidance, granted their principles, but to the extent we give that guidance and we, you know, sort of, as you said, pride along the architects and the folks who bring these things through, I think the sense can be given that obviously the department and the commission would look at it favorably, even though it's not formal, right? That, that, you know, this is sort of our guidebook. So let's work with it. And I think historically, it feels like that's gotten across, right? I mean, you didn't really need a firm stick, it was more a carrot, right? This was, so, and my, would that be a fair way to sort of think about?
Yeah, and that's what we felt as urban designers in the agency, that it was missing for a month. As Eric said, part of our work is, and work in our neighborhood studies, work with our city agencies, but also we conduct urban design review of projects. And in all those activities, we were lacking pointing out what was this umbrella, this group of values that we were commenting from. And this is, this is meant to serve like that, hopefully, that we can point out to designers, my comments are coming from this set of values that are vetted by the public, proven by the commission, adopted by all of us.
Right. So, so to that extent, I mean, I do think it's helpful that we're providing a better roadmap or maybe an updated roadmap. So thank you for the work that's going into this. I'd add my compliments.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, I just had two more questions. One is for you, Chair, which is, did I understand you to say that the commission would be adopting these principles?
I mean, that is my vision for this, and we should discuss that as a group. But I think that it would be effective to Commissioner Gold's point if we were to look at, evaluate them and send a signal that this is what we are looking for. So that's certainly part of this conversation as far as I'm concerned, but we should have that conversation together.
And then my second question is, how prescriptive is the department going to be with these? For instance, many, many years ago, after a different discussion, city planning adopted text about where sidewalk cafes were appropriate and where they were not, based on the design principles of the time. Are you envisioning that these principles would be prescriptive in that way, that would then be enshrined potentially in the zoning resolution as to the types of activities that could go in certain places based on these design principles?
I, I think we want to strive for flexibility. I, I, I think, I think that's, you know, kind of pointing back to the example of Governor's Island. That's where, the things that we knew we could enshrine in the zoning that we knew were like kind of baseline, we got to have these things and these requirements, these base heights, these connection points, these upland connections, we were able to, to enshrine that there, and that's extremely important. But giving the design teams the flexibility to think through how to do that is, is important. And I think that's where guidelines, where principles help kind of fill that gap. So I think our hope is that these would be more, more of a way to have a conversation about those things and work, workshop through how to, how to try to achieve these without being overly prescriptive.
I guess, for me at times, the goal of having it be citywide is somewhat in conflict with that. If DOT is considering sidewalk cafes and whether they're appropriate, but they have no guidelines from you per se about location or appropriate design, and they're left to their design guidelines of where it's appropriate, we may not get, I mean, one of the issues that I see frequently in walking the streets is that there isn't a lot of consistency. And that's a problem for everyone. You walk down the street and suddenly it's a parking lane, or you're driving down the street and suddenly your lane is parking or bicycles or, we don't have, give the public a consistent approach, even within the departmental planning strategies. So I think the sense here was hoping that these design guidelines would be such, that there would be a consistent approach of agencies as well as the city in making policy choices.
I, I, you know, I think there's a lot of the comments that the commission's provided today around this kind of coordination factor and how we're working better across agencies. And certainly, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, to, to do so, to, to try to tackle that again. I, I, you know, you, you mentioned open restaurants program. You know, certainly there's things that we're working on with them right now to define the actual design criteria, the actual rules. That will dictate some of the, the things that you mentioned in terms of how they will look and feel, where they can put out tables and chairs on the sidewalk. So those things are important. I would say that these principles are meant to kind of be something maybe a level above those, those specifics. So really, you know, knowing that, like, the principles could be the most outer layer, and as we go deeper into it, guidelines would be next, and then kind of the actual regulations and rules that we need to implement to ensure kind of a baseline fundamental. So I think it's important when we think about principles to guidebooks and guidelines to actual rules, that they, that, you know, we intend these to kind of work together and complement one another. But I, I, I really appreciate the, the kind of focus on how we're working across agencies from the Department of Transportation to DEP and others who have such a huge stake in the, the public realm.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thanks to both of you. I think that is it for now. So we will look forward to seeing you back here in a few months, and we'll look forward to continuing this conversation and formalizing all of this. But we know how much work you and your teams have put into this product to date, and we're very appreciative, and we thank you for being here today to share it with all of us. So, thank you. And with that, Ryan, let's talk about what is next on our agenda.
Sure. So the first item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of an amendment to a business improvement district plan in Brooklyn, Community Districts nine and 14, and our presenter is Alex Plakas. Alex?
Hello, welcome.
Hello, my name's Alex Plakas with the Economic Development and Regional Planning Division. And I'd like to present you all the application to amend the district plan of the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District. The Department of Small Business Services is the applicant for this proposal. So the Business Improvement District, BID for short, is centered around Flatbush Avenue and Church Avenue in the Flatbush neighborhood of Brooklyn, south, southeast-ish of Prospect Park, shown on the map in green. This is a commercially vibrant neighborhood with excellent transit access, and there are approximately 450 businesses within the bid boundaries. So there are currently two bids, the Flatbush Avenue bid in blue and the Church Avenue bid in green. These bids share staff and have the same executive director, as well as share much of the programming that the bids do. The proposal is to create the Church-Flatbush Community Alliance as a single bid encompassing the same properties as the current two bids. This will allow for economies of scale in delivering services and a more uniform approach to marketing and economic division, economic vision, sorry. The legal mechanism behind this is the Flatbush Avenue bid being renamed to the Church-Flatbush Community Alliance. This will then be expanded over the existing boundaries of the Church Avenue bid, and then the Church Avenue bid will be dissolved in concurrent legislation in city council. So the estimated first-year budget of the bid would be $589,000, with the table here breaking down the services, which include sanitation, marketing and promotion, and economic development, among other things. This is the same bid, this is the same budget as the current two bids combined. Funding primarily comes from assessment on commercial and mixed-use lots that will be assessed depending on the commercial square footage and length of property facing the street. Some properties along Church Avenue will pay less because they receive fewer bid sanitation services. Residential lots will be assessed $1 per year, and government and not-for-profit owned properties will not have an assessment. Assessments of property owners will also be similar to current assessments. And the services provided by the bid are above and beyond those already provided by the city. Both existing bid boards voted in favor of the proposal, and both Community Boards nine and 14 in Brooklyn voted in favor of the merger as well. And with that, I am happy to take any questions, and both the Department of Small Business Services and the Executive Director of the bid will be attending the public hearing, and will be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Let me just jump in with two quick ones. One is, what is the actual action that the commission is taking here if we were to take this action as it relates to either the Flatbush bid or the Church Avenue bid or both?
So the action by the commission would be amending the existing Flatbush Avenue bid district plan to expand over the current Church Avenue bid, and then that will be renamed the.
Okay. And then my second question is, as a matter of policy, is there any concern about adding geography to an existing bid? And if so, what is it? And if not, at what point might that become a concern? And I'll pose that to you. And I'll pose that to you, we also have bid experts here on the panel too, but give it a, give it a shot, I'm interested in your, your thoughts.
Um, I, this isn't adding any new geography, it's just expanding the one bid over the, the Flatbush bid over the current Church Avenue bid. So no new lots, no new properties are added. I don't know if that answers.
Well, it, I mean, that certainly helps. I suppose if you were to merge these two combined bids with another two bids that did not have the same staff and executive director, there would be different issues presented than one which is functionally the same already today. But, okay, but it sounds like this one doesn't present any of those issues because it's essentially the same everything, and it's just being reformulated. Okay, let me go to Commissioner Gold, and then we'll go to others.
So, I mean, this looks patently obvious, but it makes a lot of sense, right? I mean, there's a lot of leverage there in the budget. Two questions really. One, is there any downside that we should be thinking about? And two, is there anything, you know, is there a real functional difference at the end of the day, or is this more, it's almost being run as, as one today, and we're just, you know, formulating, putting it together?
Um, I guess downside, I, I personally don't see a downside to combining these two today. I mean, it allows for them to, to leverage their budget better for the services. I think that kind of also helps answer the second question. You know, it makes sense, they're connected functionally already, so, yeah.
Can I readdress that question to Commissioner Serrulo? Same question. As we look at this, what should we know? What's, what's the downside here to doing this, if any?
My, my take on that is that this is consolidation versus expansion, although the same principles would apply in an expansion. The fact that we're not dealing with two different groups, except we are dealing with different boards, not so much on the management side because that's already, it's already being run as sort of under one management umbrella, so it takes away the, sort of what, what we would expect. So I don't, particularly on this one, I don't see any issues because it's actually being managed currently. The, the complication for them is they're still legally two entities, so they're probably duplicating expenses that they would need to, like accounting, budget, audit, all those functions would have to be run by their separate not-for-profits right now, which under a new district plan and with the approval of the council would be one company under the new name. So I think we're actually facilitating probably an ease and some savings for them on, on the budget side for doing this. And again, I think that, we always use the S-word, supplemental services. And I think the other reason why by the time generally any bid application, whether it's new, an expansion, a consolidation, would get to us, they've gone through a pretty rigorous approval process that may be less official than the action of the council, or us, or anyone else. You know, legally 51% or more of the properties impacted by, by a bid creation need to sign on, but the city has actually for decades required a higher percentage of support. So by the time they get here, it doesn't mean we couldn't have someone come to the public hearing and say, I think this is a terrible idea. But we're already seeing a huge amount of support for this. The one area where I, I could see there being a problem, but doesn't seem to be the case in this particular application, is if in the merger or the expansion, there was also some corresponding change in the formula that a property, a business, whatever the formula is, was either changing or going up. In this case, it seems that there, the budget is exactly the same as it was, and I'm assuming that means the formula is also the same, or they're, you know, if there's any adjustment, they're still bringing in the same amount of money. They could come, go back to the council a year from now and look to, to double their budget, but that would come through a different process. So the only issue is that you'd make sure you had the community support, which they wouldn't be here at this point if, if SBS wasn't assured that the community support existed, and if there was going to be a, sort of a real shift in what people would be paying, that they're not paying now, that might, but that would have killed it earlier in the process. So I don't see any issue here, and I know we're calling it an expansion of one bid, but it's really a consolidation. This particular application is more of a consolidation of two bids.
Commissioner Benjamin? I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. Who's the council member?
Councilmember Joseph.
It's the same council member for both districts.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, great, thank you very much. We'll see this for a public hearing on tomorrow. Thank you very much. Ryan, what's next?
Okay, the second item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning tax amendment in Manhattan, Community District Four, and our presenter is Andy Cantu.
Hi, Andy, welcome.
Good afternoon. I will be presenting the Otis Elevator Building, which is back for a public hearing tomorrow. And I'll run through this relatively quickly since you've seen this pretty recently. Just to recap, Circle One LLC, which is an affiliate of Ornato, is requesting a zoning tax amendment to modify provisions of the Special West Chelsea District related to street wall height, as well as the applicability of the High Line Improvement FAR bonus. And the amendment would facilitate the vertical and horizontal enlargement of the historic Otis Elevator Building and associated new development in Manhattan Community District Four. Again, this is the development site located in West Chelsea, fronting 11th Avenue between West 26th and West 27th Street. The zoning lot consists of three separate tax lots. Lot One, which consists of the Otis Elevator Building and a surface parking lot, and lots Six and Ten, which contain a six-story loft building and a one-and-a-half-story former warehouse building, respectively. Again, zoning is a little bit complicated. The Otis Elevator Building is a seven-story Renaissance Revival building built in 1912 as the headquarters of the famed elevator manufacturer, and it stands 111 feet tall at the street wall. The building is a contributing structure to the West Chelsea Historic District, which was designated by the LPC in 2008. In 2019, the property owner obtained LPC approvals for the vertical enlargement, and the LPC said that in order for the expansion to not be visible from the street and thus detract from the integrity of the historic structure, it must be set back at least 20 feet from the street wall. As I mentioned, the development site is located in the Special West Chelsea District, which contains many subareas with special bulk rules, including those for FAR, height, and building articulation. The special district includes several density bonus mechanisms, including the High Line Improvement Bonus, which allows property owners in certain subareas to obtain additional floor area by making a monetary contribution to the High Line Improvement Fund. As I discussed at referral, and it bears repeating, the zoning is a little bit complicated, so within, excuse me, within 100 feet of 11th Avenue, shaded in red, the site is in a C63 underlying zoning district, which is coextensive with Subarea C of the Special West Chelsea District. And the remainder of the site, shown in purple, is zoned M15 outside of a subarea. And the base FAR for Subarea C is five, bonusable up to 7.5 FAR by participating in one or a combination of various density bonus programs. The base FAR for the M15 zoning district is five, and there's no FAR bonus available outside of a West Chelsea subarea. When the Special West Chelsea District was created, the floor area and density bonus structure didn't account for split lot conditions where there are existing buildings within the C63 portion that are built to greater than 5 FAR, and other portions of the same zoning lot within an M15 district that are underbuilt, so under 5 FAR. So when both of these conditions are present on the site, like we have here, it essentially creates an artificial ceiling on the amount of development in the M15 side. And any development in the M15 portion is reduced by any amount of floor area above 5 FAR in the C63 portion. So in 2009, the commission approved a very narrowly tailored tax amendment applying only to the site for allowing split lots to overcome this limitation by paying into the High Line Improvement Fund. And relevant to the requested action, the tax stipulates that the bonus is only available to lots existing on or before June 23rd, 2005, the date the special district was adopted. So the development, as approved by the LPC, is mostly as of right, except for the street wall height and the applicability of the density bonus mechanism, which is currently not available to zoning lots created after 2005. So the proposed two-story addition would set back 20 to 22 feet from the base, and would rise to a maximum height of 175 feet. And in total, the project would contain approximately 283,000 square feet of commercial office and retail space. As I mentioned, the development, as approved by the LPC, does not comply with current street wall height regulations. While the current height of the building is 111 feet at the street wall, the Special West Chelsea District mandates that there be a, at least 125-foot base height. Therefore, the applicant's requesting an amendment to the Special West Chelsea District so that where a site meets two conditions. One, split between Area C and an M15 district, and two, located in an LPC-designated historic district. The minimum base height is the height of the existing building to be expanded, and there would be no required street wall above that existing height. And so because of these two limiting factors, this would be the only site in the entire special district where this type of relief would be available. And the second part of the tax amendment is obviously related to the availability of the FAR bonus, which only applies to zoning lots existing prior to 2005. So at the time of the adoption of the tax amendment in 2009, the subject zoning lot only consisted of tax lots One and Six. So because the applicant's proposing to merge with Lot Ten next door, the enlarged zoning lot technically wouldn't be, wouldn't have the availability of this density bonus program since it would have been created this year. And the proposed amendment would allow qualifying zoning lots, regardless of formation date, the ability to obtain this additional FAR. And at referral, the commission asked whether eliminating the formation date could inadvertently expand the bonuses availability to more sites. And the applicant has included an analysis that should be in your briefing packet that summarized their findings, and they concluded that the subject zoning lot would be the only eligible site, and they're prepared to speak to that tomorrow, should you have any questions. Excuse me. At their December meeting, CB Four voted 43 in favor unanimously to approve the application, and the borough president also recommended approval. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you that we have seen this item before. Commissioner Buzzard?
You know, if the applicant has proposed anything, or I guess it's for the, much further down the line, but in response to the community board's recommendations around sustainability features and trees and planters and all that.
I, I told them to be prepared for those questions tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Great.
Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I had a similar question. If you can encourage them to share the rationale or, or the mitigation for flooding as well? My understanding is that it's in the...
It is in the floodplain.
100-year floodplain, right?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that, we will see them tomorrow for the public hearing. Andy, thank you very much, as always. Ryan?
Okay.
Back to you.
Certainly. So for consideration on January 18th, 2023, staff prepared reports for the Pratt Avenue retaining wall and roadway reconstruction. There was a response to some issues raised in, in the commissioner's package, so pointing that out. Also for consideration, the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, which is an individual landmark, 1880 and 1888 Coney Island Avenue rezoning, the NYPD Traffic Enforcement Unit, and that's 127 West 30th Street Office Space Lease. Also for consideration on Wednesday, we have Bradford Avenue, which is a modification to previously approved authorization, and an authorization pursuant to the Special South Richmond District, and 76 St. Albans Place, which is a certification pursuant to the Special South Richmond District. Scheduled for a vote on February 1st, 2023, are the Samuel Gompers Industrial High School, there's a briefing sheet in your package on that, it is an individual landmark, and the Julius Barr Building, also an individual landmark. For post-hearing follow-up, Cameron Burrows, I believe, is here to discuss 521 East Tremont Avenue. Cameron?
Good afternoon. Yes.
Hi, Cameron.
This is a post-hearing follow-up for the vote on 521 East Tremont Avenue, and this is an agency statement of recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll, we'll read it here.
Yeah.
Farmer City Planning is recommending it. Actions would facilitate 205 units of income-restricted housing and supportive housing, and would help meet the city's goals of creating more affordable housing and its inclusion in transit zone, will support the utilization of public transportation, et cetera. Cameron, anything else you want to add here other than what is on the screen?
Uh, no, that will be all.
Okay, I will note that it has received favorable support from Community Board Six and the Bronx Borough President, and the applicant has expressed a willingness to accommodate the asks from CB Six, and the department recommends approval for the two actions. So, thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, that's it for our agenda.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. I had a quick question on, a follow-up on Coney Island Avenue. I know you mentioned the applicant had submitted an updated rendering, but I also wanted to know if they've submitted anything else on the questions about a stronger connection between the proposed affordable housing and the race equity, the results of the race equity report? I remember that was one specific thing. I'm wondering if they've submitted anything else before we vote.
Lucia, I don't know if you've seen anything. They haven't. I'll also just say that the, the rendering that they had at the hearing is the one that they, yeah, it sent, shared with you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and it is what it is. It's three buildings, it looks more like three buildings. I don't know that it's, you know, no one's winning architectural awards for it, but, but it is, it is, uh, uh, you know.
Just for clarification, but there's, that's the last one that they submitted?
That was the last one that they submitted, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, cool. And then the other thing was, there was a question about the, uh, unrequited parking. Is there anything else on that?
Um, I don't know. Lucia, you're on, I can see you here. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so, um, yeah, so we submitted a letter in the briefing package that was from the applicant team, and they addressed some of their work on the MIH, you know, the new units that they'll be working on with the council member. The last that we saw was going to possibly be 211 units instead of 231 to accommodate 20 new three-bedroom units. And then also in that letter, they spoke to some of the AMI and RER questions that you had. I'm sorry, what was the last thing? Was there another?
Unrequited parking, the amount of...
Yeah, so for that, I believe they're willing to go down to one parking spot per unit, so if they went with the new 211 number, they were looking at 211 parking spots. But those are all, yeah, so they'll be talking with the council member when it goes to City Council on these issues.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Lucia.
Ryan, did you note that that was the last item for today?
Yes, that's the last.
Okay, well, with that, I will thank all of you for your time and attention today, of course, to the staff, Ryan, to you as always, and we will look forward to seeing you all back here tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. And for those watching, nyc.gov/engage is the place to find the action. We will see you then.